August 22nd, 2017. All councilors are present except for Consul Antipas and Consul Watson. And Consul Watson texted and said he'd be a few minutes late. Anybody have any calendar communications?
I do.
Go ahead, Diane.
Well, I wrote them down so I wouldn't forget. Just a week ago Sunday, I went to the picnic for the volunteers for the Groton Food Bank, or whatever you call it. It was so nice to acknowledge people that were giving their time. Last Saturday, I went to the Groton Airport Open Space, which was fabulous. Free time for the family, free parking. It was so big that I didn't get to all of it, but I did get on the helicopter ride, which was so cool to see Groton from the air. And last night, I went to the public hearing regarding the charter commission.
Very good.
And I went to all three of those things as well.
You guys like a little team.
No, well, the people who volunteer for the soup kitchen, it was really nice.
Yeah.
They were very, very well deserved.
Glad you guys could make it.
At Eastern Point, Harry was there too.
Harry was there too, yep.
And then at the airport, our economic development guys were, Sam and Paige were out and handing out info on all of our schools and stuff, so it was great. It was a great show. There were, by the time we got there, there had already been 300 people, so it was a great event for the GBA.
When I left, it was over 600. Oh, really? Over 600.
Right, thank you. Now, Rich?
I had a meeting last week with C, and yesterday I had a meeting with the Groton sale, and both myself and town manager were elected to be on the board directors, and I was appointed the project manager of the sale.
Very good.
Nice.
Congratulations.
And you went to the public hearing yesterday.
And I went to the public hearing yesterday.
Very good. Karen?
Yeah, I just wanted to let the council know that I went, attended a large Fitch reunion at Par IV on Saturday night. The new carpeting is in.
Great.
As we requested, looks really good. They did want to know if we had any idea when the town would be addressing the outside ramp and everything, because the wood has really started to deteriorate, and there's a railing out there that has now actually become unsafe. People use it, that have trouble walking and stuff, use it and grab a hold, and the railing shakes really bad, and I'm not sure how sturdy that is, so I want to just bring that up.
Thank you. All right. Someone want to move the minutes?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? That passes eight to zero to zero. Unfinished business? Anybody? Move on to new business, 2017-0006. Labor negotiations, a 2017 standing referral with a potential executive session, and this is, discuss tentative agreement with a collective bargaining unit. And I have a motion. I hereby move that the members of the town council, committee at the whole, along with Town Manager John Burt, Human Resources Director Bob Zagami, Deputy Police Chief Paul Gailey, and Town Attorney Eileen Duggan go into executive session to discuss strategy and/or negotiations with respect to collective bargaining with one or more bargaining units. This action is taken without prejudice to the council's right to discuss these matters in a private meeting pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, paragraph 1-200, parentheses 2. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? That passes eight to zero to zero, and we're going to go into executive session. Session. We're going to move on to 2017-0172. Adoption of ordinance to designate the Planning Commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and to abolish the zoning commission. And we have Deb and John. They're going to join us at the mic. And there's some narrative from you, John.
Correct.
In our packet.
Yes.
And we had met regarding this, and we had a public hearing regarding this, and we discussed it again, and now we're looking to discuss it yet again.
Okay.
So, you want to?
Sure. Again, John Reiner and Deb Jones from Planning and Development Services. The last meeting that we discussed is that this item at the town council, the council had asked for, and what items are pending right now before both the zoning commission, the planning commission, and specifically before the zoning commission. We're all aware of the larger zoning regulatory rewrite. In addition to that, we have a couple of special permit applications which are currently pending, as well as another zoning map amendment. The Sealy School Amendment, I think many of you know, was passed by the zoning commission at their last meeting. There's another zoning map amendment in Mystic Village, which is pending before them. That item should be done probably sometime in October. The larger question is if we do want to continue with the zoning regulatory rewrite before the zoning commission, we'd be looking at about 18 months to get the regulations written, as well as a state-required three-month public hearing notification process. Hence why the date that we recommended, if we wanted to continue going in that direction, was making this effective July 1st, 2019. So, we could achieve the goal of combining the commissions, as well as getting the regulations adopted by the commission that's working on them right now. And we put that out there as a discussion item.
Thank you. Greg?
It just seems odd to me that, you know, this whole zoning commission, this whole zoning rewrite thing was to propel the economic engine of Groton, and it's, I don't know, taken three years now that we think it's going to take to get it all approved. It's, I would think that'd be like top priority, and we could get it done faster.
It is top priority. When we first met, so I've been working for the town for almost three years. We got the funding for this project last fiscal year, and I think I've been pretty clear all along, initially saying that we thought it would probably take about three years from the start to get these regulations rewritten. I think we've been working with the zoning commission at the staff level and with our consultants pretty quickly. The Water Resource Protection District regulations, I think, got a little held up. We were kind of, because we looked at a few different avenues initially of how we wanted to adopt those, but even while we were doing that, we were working on a number of other regulations. We haven't rewritten these regulations in, I think it's been about 30 years. With that said, from our consultants now, we do have the first draft of the rewrite. There are a few sections that they still need to put a fair amount of work into. There's a lot of policy questions. It's something we've been going through internally before we bring them to the commission. We don't expect any commission to just rubber stamp these, and that's the, that whole public process. So, it's, the writing it is easy. It's getting it through and developing the buy-in. It becomes the more difficult part.
Yeah, with all, and certainly with all due respect to those folks that volunteer their time, because I know that they put a lot of time in, is there, is it possible for them to meet more often? And if so, how would that, how would that occur? Would you ask for that to be moved up, or?
I think this schedule, looking at this, is assuming we would be meeting with them once to twice a month. There were times where I believe we even might have met three times in a month with the zoning commission, because it's, there's our regular business we have to handle, and then there's rewriting the regulations. It might be possible to move this up a little bit, but we didn't want to, you know, a month or two here or there. You know, I'd rather err on the side of caution. And I think as we're rewriting these regulations, the way we're going to write them is if the zoning commission wasn't there. So, in essence, they're going to be writing themselves out of business if the regulations stick with the commission.
Thanks. Bonnie, did you want to say something?
I think Diane.
I know Diane did. I thought you went to.
Yeah.
You're all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Diane?
Okay. Thank you for coming in. We have been talking about this for quite some time now. I think any kind of change is going to be difficult, and it's going to be time-consuming, but I have to tell you, I think July 1st of 2019 is too long away. I would like to see you get it done by October 5th. Like I said, I know that it's going to be difficult, no matter when you do it, but if we can help at all, I'm certainly available to, if I can be any kind of input, but I would like it to be done sooner than later. Thank you.
Deb?
Oh, she's.
Yeah.
(laughing).
Over here. The one, I definitely agree that it should be October 5th, and it's going to be painful, but I think we're one of the very few towns left that have a combined planning and zoning. We're, you know, same as the RTM that last night. We're like a dinosaur, and we need to get our head out of the sand and get into the 20th century. But, and item number three in the ordinance, I thought after the public hearing, we all had agreed that we were going to go down to five members.
The ordinance was originally, yes, the ordinance was originally written, erring on the side of caution. The town attorney had said put seven in there, and if you wanted to reduce it down to five, which is.
So, we can reduce it as we choose?
Yes.
You can't increase it.
Correct. So, that's why we put it in seven.
And then how many alternates were you, were we recommending?
Stealth.
Stealth rate? Okay.
Deb?
So, I'm, oh, I would like to know the pros and cons, because there's pros and cons to everything, and if we rush something along, we just might cut off our nose despite our face. At the same time, this particular zoning commission has been working on this for pretty much half the time of what you're telling me we still have left, correct? Roughly?
We've been working on the regulatory rewrite for over a year, focusing on, most of it initially was the Water Resource Protection District, and during that time, still handling normal business, as well as setting some pretty clear policy on bigger picture items, which allowed our consulting to write a draft of the entire document now.
So, as, my opinion with all of the councilors has not changed. This is something that I still support 110% moving forward, and I know that there has to be some smart choices made, and I guess my worst fear is if we go ahead and plug forward and we combine with some of the hesitation that I'm sensing as far as some of the planning people, some of the zoning people taking on too much responsibility, I'm almost afraid that it might cause a delay even further in getting this forward. This is just my gut. I could be completely wrong. So, I would like your take on the pros and cons a little bit more, if you have anything further to offer outside of my gut feeling with this.
And that gut feeling right there is exactly why we had recommended, yes, let's combine the commissions, but let's put it off. Let us finish writing the regulations with the existing commission. We will do what we, the best we can do with whatever decision the council makes. The negative of combining the commissions now is the planning commission has a fair amount of work that they deal with now, and our fear, and I think it will be reality, is it will slow down the process of writing the regulations. Because if they want to spend the same level of time reviewing those as the zoning commission was, and the zoning commission has a lot less normal business than the planning commission does.
Okay, so, my last question. Has the zoning commission been a little bit more unbiased in their moving forward in the zoning regulations? I don't know how else to say it, but it seemed like it was very one-sided for a while, and I would like your honest opinion on whether or not you feel that this has shifted at all since this has come about as a discussion.
The zone change for the Sealy School was, a public hearing was held at their last meeting. It was closed at that meeting, and it was passed at that meeting. I thought that was very clear action on their part, that they're supporting our economic development goals.
Okay. That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Rich?
John, suppose we set a date of July 1st, 2018? Would that be reasonable?
I'd ask you for a few more months. That, that's pretty tight.
It's still tight.
That's still tight.
I know you're doing a lot of work now with the planning. I see signs up all over.
Yeah.
So, I realize that, yeah, you can't do both things at once. But, October of 2018?
John?
I was thinking more like January 1st, 2019. You know, speeds up by seven months, but it seems a little more doable.
The tricky part, I think that's certainly a better date than October, is the required timeline of the advertising, which, the notification, which can be up to three months, and we can't start that until we're done.
Final draft.
Yeah. So, that's, that's the tricky part. I mean, we can push really hard, which is what we're intending to do through this. Getting the right product. I mean, again, we're rewriting laws on our zoning for the town of how we want to see it, and I hope that myself, or whoever's after me, isn't coming back to the council 20 years from now, or 10 years from now, I should say. In 20 years, we'll probably want to revisit these regulations on a much bigger scale to say, hey, we have to redo this. We want to do the best job that we can with the adequate amount of time.
Diane?
I cannot wrap my head around giving you to July of 2019. I'm sorry. What I could, could maybe have some kind of compromise and give you to the end of the year instead of October 5th, maybe January 1st of 2018, but I think, I think this has been delayed for an awful long time, and it needs, it needs to get done.
Make your motion.
Thank you.
Greg, and then Bonnie?
Yeah, regardless of what date we finally end up, I'm just concerned that we're going to, you know, lose out on developments, because, you know, we promoted this as the thing that's going to really spur developers wanting to come in and do business, and if, you know, if it gets too late in the game, you know, we're going to miss those, the big projects. That's what I'm concerned about. And maybe you can comment on that.
Yeah, so if, right now, with just the, the amount of work that's pending before the planning commission and them doing their normal business, if we then take this complete zoning regulatory rewrite and put it on the planning commission today, they haven't done this before. Right there, we're going to delay this months. Three or four months, getting them up to speed of where we are, where things are going, and get them to kind of back to square one of where we are today. Then we have to walk them through all the changes that we're making in a very complex document, set of laws. I mean, there's, some of the stuff is, might be easier than others and is more exciting, and other things like signage, that takes a lot of effort, a lot of time, there are a lot of legal stuff there. So, I think if we stick with working on the zoning regulations with the zoning commission, but voting to combine them at a future date, I think that's the fastest process for us to stay ahead of the economic development curve. All the feedback that we've been getting from developers is they recognize that we're doing this effort. They're happy that we're doing this effort, and working with them on some of our key redevelopment properties, like the Sealy School, Mystic Oral School, Mystic Ed Center, in talking about the zoning that we're changing on those, or will, depending on the projects that come in, that's getting a lot of positive traction, and those are the case-by-case basis. I think a number of other developers are waiting on the tax increment financing, and that, we're a few months out on that, and as that comes through, a lot of times, in many municipalities, the zoning doesn't always match what that future development is, and sometimes that happens through the application process. It's better if we're ahead of that, and I think people are patient and optimistic from the developers that we've been meeting with. None that I'm aware of have said, oh, we're not coming to do business in Groton right now because your zoning's taking too long. I haven't gotten that feedback.
Bonnie, and then Harry.
So, what, is there a statute or law that would prohibit a special committee to work on the zoning rewrite, and then have it voted on by the new planning and zoning committee? Like, some of the people who are really knowledgeable from the zoning committee, couldn't, can't there be a subcommittee working on this that could meet a little more often and get it done faster?
There could be. The fear with that is, that's exactly what happened with the Plan of Conservation and Development. A subcommittee met, directed the consultant on how to put the plan together, that plan was finalized, it was taken to the planning commission, and they didn't like it at all. And they said, nope, we're not adopting this. We want all of these changes, and it took another.
Year.
Yeah.
A year.
I don't want to repeat that and waste money.
Harry?
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion. It's going to be a variation of number three here. Designate the Planning and Zoning Commission as the Planning and Zoning Commission, and abolish the zoning commission effective January 1st, 2019, instead of July. Allow the zoning commission to complete work, the zoning regulation rewrite project, and hold a properly noticed public hearing. That's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. I have a couple, so, I, I know that there's a, you know, this project was started, and it was clear that the council wanted it there to look at combining, and from everything I can tell, everybody's on board with combining is just a matter of time. If, if the, I will tell you that I did talk to the majority of people on the planning commission, and they all said they would remain on if it was combined.
Nice.
The only person I didn't, I didn't get in touch with was Barbara, the alternate. And I, I want to, I think that the, the development doesn't stop because we don't have these regulations, and people are going to continue to come into the town, and I think our goal is to make sure that these regulations beat out people trying to come in and develop, especially with the job growth at EB and that kind of thing. And we want to make it easier for people, and that job growth is going to take place over, it's really 10-plus years. I think it peaks, pretty, pretty, at least 10 years out there. I want to say I'm pretty sure. So, with a desire to get the two done, you know, to get it moved over, and the, and not to delay, like, if you do it prematurely, as you've kind of said, you, you could end up delaying and having problems, because the people who are on the planning commission have an abundance of work and can't, and they're all volunteers, so it's hard to say, do you want to, hey, can you do a subcommittee on this date? You know, I think that they're all, they're all, we all know how valuable time is. So, you know, I support the January 1st, but get, like, just because we put a date out there, theoretically, we could move it. Like, if you reported back to us in a year and said, hey, we're moving at a really great pace, we're going to be ready on September 1st of 2018, theoretically, we can, we can change it, right? I mean, we can, or?
Well, at that time, if we were ready by September 1st, 2018, the way the regulations are going to read is going to talk about a planning and zoning commission. So, I mean, we could work that out with the town attorney, but, again, as I said before, the commission's job as part of this is going to be writing themselves out of the regulations.
Yeah.
I think if we got it through faster, we would find an easy solution around that.
Right. And then if, the other question I had is, if, if the council changes, can the next council change the, like, can they change the date? You know, can they, they come in and say, I want it to be 2020, or I want it to be, you know, 2017, you know, 2018? Can they?
Or I want this to happen.
Yeah, right, right.
Well, if, if the council adopts this, this is an ordinance, so then they would have to re-notify, re-advertise.
Gotcha.
It would be a similar type of action.
Process.
Yes.
Okay. Deb?
Okay, so my only last thought on this is if we agree to January, and all of a sudden you come to us and say, we have hit a roadblock and we're a month behind, we can give you a month. Or, I guess, the whole mental philosophy is, oh, we have 18 months. Oh, wait, we only have 12 months. It's just a different mentality of trying to keep things streamlined and efficient as possible. So, I tend to want to go with the January 1st, because this might put a little feet under the fire to kind of keep things moving at the momentum that it seems to be moving at right now, and I would rather beg for forgiveness of another month or two at that stage. Well, of course, we're sitting here. I'd love to do that for you. So anyways, that's kind of my thoughts only into this vote.
Pardon?
I completely disagree with the January 1st. I want to, we have a motion on the table, but I prefer alternative two for October 5th, 2017. I think there's some value to having a new set of fresh eyes with this new committee. We're going to recruit some additional people probably to it, to take a look at it and, and just work on it from October 5th on and finish it.
Consul, what would the value be? What, what do you think the value would be to, to have a different set of eyes, start looking at it after a month, after 18 months of work? Wouldn't they have to get completely caught up, like, have to go back and reread everything, understand it? Like, it's going to, it's going to delay them, because they're, they have to, they have an 18-month catch-up to do, so I'm, I'm just wondering what the?
Well, the planning department, the planning commission is fairly familiar with the zoning regulations, so, because of the work they do. So, I don't think it's going to be that difficult for them to get caught up.
I mean, that's true. They are definitely more familiar with the regulations they use.
I mean, that's what, yeah.
But the policy decisions that the zoning commission has made, we'll certainly have to revisit all of that with the planning commission to make sure that they agree with the regulations. No?
Well, and the process that the zoning commission was using about paid line by line during a meeting was incredibly tedious, in my opinion, and maybe the new commission will look at it in a different way, and read it before they come to the meeting, and vote on it a little quicker.
Greg?
Well, I was just wondering. It, it sounds like you just had the consultant rewrite the majority of the zoning regs, and they haven't seen those yet.
Correct.
So, there is a lot of things they haven't even touched yet.
Correct, but a lot, that rewrite is based on the policy direction that we've received from our current zoning commission. How we're consolidating our zoning districts, many, many things.
Okay. I want to have a question. We kind of touched on it a little bit, and I, money aside, could this get sped up by getting additional, like, getting consultants to, to help with the process? I know.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Right now, it's, staff is looking at the document that we receive from the consultant, working that through. Okay, is this with the direction we think? Do we like this? Is this how it flows? And then it's bringing it to the zoning commission. So, much of it now is in, there's still work the consultant has to do, don't get me wrong. A lot of it is the, the public process. There's a lot of internal staff work that we need to do, and then bringing it to the commission. And we expect sometime in the next, probably month or two, we'll have the first sections of that, of those redraft of regulations to the zoning commission.
And is it, I think it was touched upon in your, in your narrative, but isn't it, well, I know it's true, because I heard from the planning commission members, they don't want to do it. They, they, I think, is that true? I mean, they stated that they'd much prefer, that's what their concern is.
Yes.
That they don't want to do it. So, if, if we did vote that, that they had to do it, there may be a process where some of them do drop out, and we'd have to find, which would delay, I could delay a month, could delay.
And that would delay things.
Yeah.
Also. And we're trying to offer a, I think, a best-case scenario here of how could we reach this goal of combining the Planning and Zoning Commission while still staying on track and getting these regulations written in a fashion as quickly and the best product that meets the, what the town desires.
Yeah. Greg, do you want to say something?
Yeah, so it sounds like there's not really, like, a deadline, like, we want all these approved by a certain time. Is there a way to, to ask for them to, to meet more often to try to, you know, get these things approved quicker?
We certainly will meet more often. It's the juggle of other business outside of the zoning regulations, and then just how quickly we can turn things over.
Right.
Because, again, as other applications are coming in, staff time gets Because, again, as other applications are coming in, staff time gets redirected in, in different ways, and we've been putting as much time into this as we can, but, again, this is something we haven't done in 30 years. We want to make sure we get it right.
Karen?
I was just going to say, I think when you serve on a board or commission, and especially most of our people on the planning commission and the zoning commission have been in, on those commissions for a considerable amount of time, and I think you develop an expertise. And you're talking about two commissions with different members on each one, and each commission members have developed skills in, in the subject matter that they deal with. As much as I would like to do this sooner rather than later, I think that waiting until January 1, 2019 is the prudent way to go, because what you're doing, if you do it sooner, you're basically asking the planning commission, who has absolutely no knowledge about writing zoning regulations, to take over a function. And I would highly expect that a great majority of them are flat-out going to refuse to do that. They're going to say, this is too important, and this is not, is something I have absolutely no background in, and I'm not comfortable doing that, so I quit. And I think the wise thing to do is let the planning commission, or the zoning commission, finish with the rewrites, give them the drop-dead date of January 1, let them do their job, and then the regs get turned over to the planning commission, or to the new planning and zoning commission to impose and regulate on. I think that's the best approach, in my opinion.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move it to a vote. John, does anything you wanted to add?
No, you know, I've been flat here a little bit, some flexibility we could push off. Am I correct in assuming that some zoning commission members would want to serve on that mixed, on the mixed board? So hopefully, you're going to have a blending of the two, so you're going to bring some of that knowledge from the zoning commission into that other group, so that you're not going to completely lose that, so, in the history of what went on during the process.
Correct.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? That passes eight to zero to zero.
Thank you.
2017-0201 Senior Center Consignment Shop Operations Agreement. You want to talk about that, John?
Sure. And I'm not sure how much has been talked about in the past, but everybody's familiar with consignment shop in the senior center, and that there's been issues with increased regulations and complexity of running it, and it's now become all the town staff running it, and it's losing money for them. They put it out for bid, the only, in terms of finding someone, a third party, to run the consignment shop. We're not talking a lot of money involved, but the ARC did bid on it, and they're interested in it. Of course, you have higher functioning, special needs, people that need placement, this gives them something to do. We had something very similar. We actually had a, one of the crossroads in where I came from, just like the ARC, that actually had a consignment shop, and right near downtown, and worked brilliantly there, so it's a good option here, and gets our staff away from having to do it as a losing proposition, you know, gainfully employees and ARC participants, and get to keep the consignment shop, so it's a win-win-win all the way around.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, this was, this was run by the 55-plus club at one point. I read your email today that you sent, I think, explaining it.
Yeah, they were, they were running it fully themselves at first, and then they started bringing town staff more into it as they got more complexity and to handle the hours, and eventually they pulled all the way out of it, so-
So, there's some profit that comes from this, and it goes somewhere. Does it go to that, to that club?
I believe the people putting the materials in, you still sell your stuff. If you wanted to sell an item, so you make, you know, the people who want to put their clothes into this would make money, and then, then we get a small amount off of it, and then the ARC gets an amount.
It's not, it's not that important.
But, you know, it was a little bit of a moneymaker for those who wanted to sell their items, you know, through the club, 55, through the consignment shop, and they'll continue to be able to do that.
Well, this, this 55 club does some good stuff. They give scholarships for kids in schools, and, I mean, it's, they do, but so they were running it at one point, and then I guess, it kind of took somewhat of a step back, and the staff had to run it.
Right.
And now you're trying to find a solution, so you're-
Because it does not make enough money to pay for the staff time involved.
Right. So, it's not going to cost us anything.
No, no.
Craig?
Same money, actually.
Question. So, we're losing, we're giving up all the liability for staff time and-
Right. Correct. And whatnot. Purchasing agents in favor, but Marks and Berry's in favor of it, and, like I said, I don't see any downside with it.
You want a motion to accept the-
Right.
Yeah, I'll make that motion, but I have a question.
Okay.
It's ARC, it's the folks that are, that are going to be, the only ones that bid, right?
They were the only ones that bid, yes.
So, I'm going to make that motion.
Second.
Okay. My next question is, for how long? Is this a year-to-year thing, or is it?
It is.
Do we get that? I didn't get that.
It is. It's in the back. I just found it. It's like-
Well, you know what it is, the minutes were first.
I apologize. Our attorney reviewed it, I, I reviewed it that way.
It's like, it's like the third or fifth to the last page. One, two, three.
Starts, uh-
Four pages from the back.
All right.
Now, it says, you know, term shall begin March. It's going to start September 1st, that's why we're trying to get it in, and then it'll go review it, um-
Review term.
Through your term. And the three-month out notice, if we want to cancel it.
I actually don't have it. That's okay. I'm good.
Marks had quite a bit of dialogue with ARC on this and outran the details of it, and it hashed over. They had, our attorneys were involved with some of the language in the contract to firm up the duties, and, so there were some changes to this by our attorneys to make sure it fit everything we needed, so.
Any other questions in this? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? That passes eight to zero to zero. And does anybody have any other business? So, I just want to make, I think there's some discussion with the council about tomorrow night, and John, and Dr. Grineer, and Scott-
Scott and some-
And Kim, and myself are going to meet just to talk about the budget and, and, you know, potential what- what-ifs with the, with regards to, excuse me, with regards to the governor's budget and where we're, where we're heading or not heading, so.
And we'll talk a little bit also with the, we're going to have the meeting with the governor on September 5th. We'll talk probably tomorrow night a little bit about what we're going to present there.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, everybody got that email?
Yes, yes.
Dr. Grineer and I will be meeting with him.
Thank you.
And Bruce, if the mayor, if he's available.
Craig?
I replied.
I think I did, too. I think I replied.
You did. Anybody else?
Move we adjourn.
Second.
We adjourned?